Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the village of Roscoe Board meeting, Tuesday, March 4th, that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, on paper, in the digital, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve?
Beckcock?
Here.
Teddy?
Here.
Block?
Here.
Sima?
Here.
Wright?
Here.
Malaco?
Here, and I can hear you.
Yeah.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve our minutes from the February 18 meeting? So moved.
Second.
Anyone have an addition or correction? Hearing the? Beckcock?
Yes.
Malaco?
Yeah.
Wright?
Yes.
Sima?
Yes.
Teddy? Yes.
Yeah.
Public comment? Anyone wishing to make public comment? Anyone online? Or? That'll be a chance at the end of meeting. President's report, just very briefly. Letters went out to various stakeholders, businesses on Main Street and a bar. I want to thank trustees who submitted additional names. Those additional persons were contacted with letters as well. And we are waiting, awaiting the RSVPs when we get a tally or a list, I'll send it out to you. And this is, you also got a copy of the letter, of course, you're invited. This is March 13th at North Point at four o'clock. We will post it as an open meeting so that we don't have to worry. So all trustees show up. So we're excited, hopeful that we can get several participants. The list was long that it went out to. And we'll have a very good meeting a little bit later in this evening. David Sidney here will go through very briefly what we're going to do in that meeting shortly. This topics. So look forward to your participation. Treasurer's report. You have in your documents, the cash report and the bills. You're being asked to approve bill night that total There are also motor fuel expenditures, various salt applications during the last month that total $40,731.69. So total expenditures for tonight for your approval is $262,985.54. As you look over bills and question. May I have a motion then to pay the bills? So moved.
Second.
Sima?
Yes.
Block?
Yes.
Teddy? Yes. Beckcock?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Malaco?
Yeah.
Item number five. May I have a motion? Well, yes.
Thank you.
To approve our participation in Roscoe Restaurant Week to take place April 11 through April 19. The dollar amount aside for that is $2,000. And there is a caution here. It would be appreciated if the dollar amount was approved. We're not yet certain if this event is going to take place because all of the RSVPs are still awaiting responses and there'll be follow-up calls. There were a total of eight organizations that expressed interest. One that is confirmed, but as I said, it later will be an attachment to each the others to get a solid confirmation. And if it doesn't happen till now, oh, on today, yeah, you're on a roll. Okay. And the thought was, we need at least six to make this happen. If it doesn't happen this year, it can be, we can combine our efforts next year with the Rockford event and go Rockford. So no worries, but we'll see what happens. So all of that being said, is there a motion to approve this expenditure and this participation? So moved.
Second.
Wright?
Yes.
Teddy? Yes. Block?
Yes.
Sima?
Yes.
Beckcock?
Yes.
Malaco?
Yeah.
Item number six, may I have a motion to approve Resolution 2025-3, entering into an agreement with Baker Tilly to perform the village's 2024 audit at an amount not to exceed $31,000.
One more total is possible.
Yes, yes. Second.
Malaco?
Yeah.
Beckcock?
Yes.
Teddy? Yes. Block?
Yes.
Sima?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Item number seven, may I have a motion to approve Resolution 2025-04, authorizing the acceptance as public right of way and dedication or the dedication of a portion of property adjacent to the Easternmost Terminus of Edith Lane.
Moved. Second.
Teddy? Yes. Block?
Yes.
Sima?
Yes.
Beckcock?
Yes.
Malaco?
Yeah.
Wright?
Yes.
Item number eight. May I have a motion to approve ordinance 2025-03 approving a tax amendment? Excuse me, approving a tax amendment revising the village of Roscoe zoning ordinance, section 15-516, 15-517, and 15-752 related to accessory buildings and accessory structures.
So moved.
Second. It's the first, sorry, thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Block?
Yes.
Teddy? Yes. Beckcock?
Yes.
Malaco?
Yeah.
Wright?
Yes.
Sima?
Yes.
Number nine. May I have a motion to approve ordinance 2025-04, approving a tax amendment revising the village of Roscoe zoning ordinances, section 15-555 and 15-409 related to solar energy collection systems.
So moved. Second.
Wright?
Yes.
Sima?
Yes.
Malaco?
Yeah.
Beckcock?
Yes.
Teddy? Yes. Block?
Yes.
Item number 10. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 2025 R-05, approving the final plan of Fox Point Plan 6?
So moved. Second.
And before the vote, during our end of session questions and reports, Brandy as well explain the rollout and the timing of all of this. Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Teddy? Yes. Malaco?
Yeah.
Block?
Yes.
Beckcock?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Sima?
Yes.
Thank you. Going on, may I have a motion to suspend the rules for item number 11? So that we can proceed?
So moved. Second.
Teddy? Yes. Malaco?
Yeah.
Beckcock?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Sima?
Yes.
Block?
Yes.
Item number 11. They have a motion to approve Resolution 2025 R-06, entering into the engineering outsourcing agreement with Bear Graham and Associates to provide municipal engineering services for 2025 jointly, Village of Roscoe and City of South Lloyd for the quoted amount of $73,250. Now, this dollar amount is for March through December.
So moved. Second.
Beckcock?
Yes.
Malaco?
Yeah.
Wright?
Yes.
Sima?
Yes.
Block?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes, thank you. Again, so that we can proceed, may I have a motion to suspend the rules for item number 12, Resolution 2025-07, so that we can make this final oath?
So moved. Second.
Sima?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Teddy? Yes. Block?
Yes.
Beckcock?
Yes.
Malaco?
Yeah.
I may have a motion then to approve Resolution 2025-07, entering into the execution of an agreement for the purchase of real property at 10517 and 10531 Main Street for the amount of $225,000 plus standard closing costs, which will be split 50/50 by ourselves.
So moved. Second.
Wright?
Yes.
Beckcock?
Yes.
Malaco?
Yeah.
Teddy? Yes. Block?
Yes.
Sima?
Yes.
Item 13, again, may I have a motion to suspend the rules and make the acceptance of the tentative fiscal year 2025 budget and appropriation a vote tonight?
I move that we just keep the first reading.
Question, when does the public, the public hearing has to happen? We have to post this for public dissemination and we have to meet the deadline of, what? The end of March for having this included? So stringing this out is becoming problematic. When, how much time do we have?
At the end of March, we want to publish it preferably, you know, this week and then have our public hearing and the approval at the next board meeting. All the changes that we've discussed, I mean, we've made a few, one or two changes each board meeting, but are there specific changes people aren't interested in making or questions, I guess?
What's, what's the purpose? Give some.
I have a question.
What is it? Stacy?
Can someone just explain what is in the contingencies? And what, I think it's called unassigned? It's like quarter of a million dollars in those multiple accounts. Can someone just kind of explain what those are? What tucked away in there?
Contingencies are true contingencies, unexpected expenses. I think I got 3% of budgeted department's costs as like a standard contingency. In the past, we've used those as actual things and not actually use them as true contingencies. The goal is now, and the plan is now, to use those as actual contingencies as defined by the state statute, which are really are for unplanned, unknown expenses that may come up. So we may not actually ever spend those contingencies, preferably we won't. I know in the past, we put things in there. We may have used those for things that we thought we were going to spend, but didn't have a line item specifically for them. Under the new system and the way we probably should have been doing it in the past, we do have contingencies or true contingencies, unplanned, unknown expenses. So that's what those numbers are for. And that's how we figured those out, is percentage of the departmental budgets. As for the itemizations that are the, the, I forgot what you, what you're calling them on here, the unassigned, I think, amounts. Those are, so you have itemizations in there. In the past, we haven't actually provided itemizations. We've given you, here's the line item for this particular unline item. What we've done now under this new system, and it's really more of a budgeting sort of feature for sort of departments, as we plan our budgets on these, we actually can sort of build up a line item based on different expenses we might have, different things we might have. But really, we're trying to hit, we're really aiming for that, that departmental number that we've sort of spent in the past years, trying to keep those roughly, roughly the same. So the ones that are like unassigned or unknown, essentially that's just the placeholder in the itemization system to show that, how we built those numbers up to get to that actual account number, such as like, I don't know, the account number would be, say, equipment rentals. We can plan out equipment rentals, once we absolutely know, okay, we have this number of equipment rentals every year, we, or this specific one, right? This is renting a vacuum truck for four months, estimate is $900. Well, we also know throughout the year that we, you know, rent other equipments in that department historically. You know, throughout the year, that ends up maybe, you know, $20,000 total. So instead of just saying, we're going to have to figure out every single item that we might spend throughout the year. What we're, our budgeted line item is that equipment rental number. Instead of just putting down, you know, $50,000 on there, we use those itemizations to help us sort of build, to help us make sure we don't miss anything. So really, what you need to look at is the, are those account numbers? The, the actual ones with like, you know, 40, 54, 40, or, you know, 10-5990, wherever they are. Those are the actual account numbers we're budgeting for. The itemizations are just sort of a helping, a tool that we use to, to get to that number.
Okay, I, I just, a little concerned when we're budgeting, like I said, it's like a quarter of a million dollars or more and it's not really assigned anything. And once we budget it, we kind of lose control over where that could end up. I mean.
Well, there, I mean, we, the other, I mean, the other option is, is not to do itemizations and we'll just, we just give you those numbers. It's really, it's a hard tool for us to help create the budget. And we really haven't provided those or shown you those in the past. We've just given you that account number in the past. But we are trying to show sort of how we plan it, how we, you know, think about it, how departments are thinking about it. So that's really what those numbers are. It's just a planning tool for us to use to help get to that account number.
And I get it, it's just, when it just says unassigned, that means that if, for some reason, all of a sudden, you wanted to go buy a bridge, that money's already there. You just say, oh, I'm taking it from the unassigned. And that's, you know, a budgeted item, so we can, you know, seems like we're losing a little bit of control there. Maybe I'm wrong, if the others agree with it, that was my big thing, is I just didn't like having that much money floating around out there without any real definition of where it was going or what it was going to be used for.
So contingency, I mean, and so we can't just purchase without, you know, board approval or board anything on there. And then again, in those account numbers, those are the, the levels they are. So they're not just, it's not just floating out there. So if you have, you know, unassigned on there or unitemized on there, it's under, say, training and seminars. That is the, that's the item that you're looking at. So I need, I need that, that total number comes up is the training seminar number or the, I don't know, accounting, auditing fee or treasurer services fee. It's those, those are the breakdowns. Yeah, yeah.
But then there was this like, it just said like, unassigned or something, $60,000.
Those are actually, yeah, those are actually.
$180,000, they're all over the place.
Those are actually underneath those account numbers. So those really aren't anything, those aren't, like, those aren't anything that get tracked, those aren't anything, anything goes towards. You'll see a lot of those, I guess, are those itemizations like in the insurance ones, right? We have, we have every single, that's a, that's probably a good example, like health insurance, right? We have every single person who's getting health insurance under that, you know, that 10-4310, whatever. So we, we, that's how we build up that number. But all you're really approving for like health insurance is that account number. They, they would say 27,429, wherever it is. You're only approving that account number, not necessarily how we get to that account number. So if there's, you know, if you think it's, I guess, you're talking, yes, departments, if you think those particular account numbers are too high, but it's not just like unassigned pool of cash or money, it's just how we build up to it. Some things we don't have, you know, we don't necessarily have the, we don't do breakouts all throughout the time for those. We know like every year we spend X number of dollars in, say, telephone bills. We don't necessarily break out, here's every single bill we're going to get. I think we actually did this year. But in the past, all you approved is say the, say the $14,000 for telephone and data. In the past, all you've done is just prove that $14,000. This year, we're showing you, here's how we got to that $14,000. And it allows us to help figure it out. But when the bills come in, they're only going towards that telephone and data number. So we're not tracking necessarily, you know, each of those individual itemizations under there. We're just, we'll be signing the bill, we'll go through to the, the telephone and data account number. So they're not really things we're tracking anyway, what you're, what we're tracking is those main account numbers. And we can.
If I may, if I may add something here. Stacy, I know you have done many budgets in the past and there had always been contingencies because things always pop up, the unexpected, the unprepared. So having something in contingency gives us the opportunity or the flexibility to meet emergencies or the unexpected. We have a huge windstorm and we have a lot of trees down on municipal property and we've only set aside $20,000 for taking care of those trees. And all of a sudden, you've got to spend 50. Well, having those extra dollars in contingency allows us to meet that. We have a asbestos lawsuit out there. We have no idea what the payout is going to be on the village's part. So we could put X number of doctors' petition in the legal fund or put some in contingency so that we could hope to do that. So it gives us the flexibility and as Joe said, anything that is going to be expended comes to the board for approval. It just isn't an arbitrary thing that we go out and do. It requires board approval, so there still is control over what is spent. And time is short here, we have admired this document for many weeks now and we have, we have to get moving and follow statutory requirements here. So if there's a specific suggestion.
Month late, you, the whole process started way, way later than it should have because we started the new system. That's not my fault that you guys didn't get it going. No, it's the truth, current.
So what is your specific suggestion?
I don't understand the unassigned, it just says unassigned or unlabeled.
Unassigned, yep, unassigned is different than, so in the past, all you've received, I, if you got the doc, I can pull a document in front of you, but in the past, all you've received is the, the budget item, in the budget, all you've seen is the, essentially the ones in bold on that budget sheet I gave you. So one that says, you know, say, it'll say 01-184212 salaries. All you've been given in the past is just that number, the big bulk number. What we've done, a lot of categories this year is, when we know we've got things, and this will be building up, you know, in years, in the future too here, but we know we have certain, you know, certain types of things that go into those categories, so we don't miss them. So we list them out in there in our budgeting system for that. But that's just a planning document for us to use to get to that account number that we provided you in the past. So those numbers are the same types of numbers you've seen in the past in those account numbers. If there are certain ones you think are too high, or if there's certain accounts that you want us to reduce.
Labeled like that, unassigned.
Yeah, you haven't seen, because you've never. Yeah, because you've never been provided any of those backups in the past. This year, we're providing you the backup, how we build those numbers up. And each year, we'll provide it more.
Set to move first reading. Because I'm kind of lost now, track where we were.
Malaco asked.
Well.
Wait. Okay, was there, right, I lost.
Were you asking for a motion?
I don't know, was there a motion? Because when we moved to first reading.
No, no, right, you asked for something and, as I said, Justin asked for a first reading and I'm wanting to know, okay, could you go back?
Well, suspend the rules was what she asked.
Right.
The motion to suspend the rules.
And I would say, if we're looking for a motion to suspend the rules, we can get by this. If nobody votes for it, then go on to the other one. So I'd make a motion to suspend the rules.
Listen, I have a question I've been trying to ask.
Why don't we just have our discussion and then we'll decide?
Let's have our attorney.
Well, there's a question, there's a motion pending. Either it has to be settled. Either it has to be seconded. There can't be discussion until it's either seconded or fails for life. Or you can withdraw.
So how can we have?
You can ask a question, I'm not going to ask.
Well, there was a motion to suspend.
So how would we have a discussion?
Let's, let's take a vote on that motion.
Will you give a second and then you discuss?
Sorry, we're going to get by it one way or the other, so.
So on the floor, so to speak, there was a motion to suspend the rules. Was there a second? So that motion fails for lack of a second.
There you go, until now, I'm the next one. Okay, let's move.
So what's the motion here regarding this tentative budget? What do you want to do with it?
I've been respectfully trying to ask a question. It has not been addressed, I raised my hand, I've asked. So if I can't ask a question, I'm not going to state it in a motion because I want to have more education as this thing came up, so.
Well, according to the public's order, Mr. Green.
So I'll make a motion that we keep it as a first reading. If I get a second, we can have discussion. We don't have to vote, this will be a first reading, what you're saying.
Prior to the motion, the chair can allow general discussion on the topic. Once a motion is made, there has to be a second before continued discussion can occur. And then you discuss the motions second and you can throw a yes or no.
I'm asking for a general discussion.
So now that we've dealt with suspending rules, we can just have an open conversation about this. Okay.
Okay.
Let's go ahead.
Okay, couple of questions, Joe. Why are we hearing about this now? Like why, like, you know, I was pushing for education and letting us know. Again, we went clear go, and I understand that, you know, these things are rolled up. But coming into here, to Stacy's question, the unassigned and miscellaneous, that's a change, right? From what you're saying from last year or from time before, right? And my question is, was this in the first draft, it was miscellaneous in as well? But we never discussed it, we never had any discussion, this education as to what it is, how it changed from last year. So that's, my one question is, you know, when did it change? Why did it change? Why weren't we made aware of it? I think, again, it comes down to training and education. You want, you all want to make, you know, good decisions here and want to know what we're hearing about it. And hearing about things or being educated on something right before a vote, is not a good time to do it, right? So my, my respectfully ask that we go through this and, you know, just raise your hand if you understand it, right? I mean. It's the semantic word of unassigned. So I'm, I'm just kind of to. So we're not saying no, I'm just saying, listen, as a, to do my due diligence here, I want to understand it, right? And I, I want to have a better understanding of why the change was made. And I get your point, Carol, as far as things coming up. You know, so for instance, what is the difference between unassigned and miscellaneous, right? Can we start there?
I guess, give me an example when you want to look at, I can, maybe easiest, let's see. Can I find an assigned one? So I guess, really, so, I mean, everybody knows that we budget by accounts. I guess, I assume you've all seen that, so nothing's changed in the budget since we've, we've started it, is the first thing, I guess. Somebody share my screen here, maybe this will help. There's been the same, yeah, same budget document, see. All right, you ever seen my screen? I think it should be up there. Let's see, we've got, these are bad ones with employees, look at. So we've got, let's see.
Joe, can you enlarge it?
Yeah, I'm trying to find a good one for unassigned on it.
Or refer to the page that we're looking at, people can find it in their documents.
Yeah, I'm just trying to find a page. Do you have a specific one you want to look at right now, Stacy or Mike? Yeah, I'll try to find ones, we need to look at a specific example.
Give me an example of, of stuff that will go under unaside. Give me an example of what goes under miscellaneous.
Nothing will, nothing will go under unassigned. So unassigned is not a category that anything goes under at all. So like else, so we've got, let's say, here's a random, all right, here's a random page here. So we've got. But.
I have a couple of examples, actually, one tonight that I'm presenting during.
Oh, perfect, would, yeah, which we, maybe a better example makes it easier.
Okay. So a couple of examples is like, tonight I'm going to be presenting, yeah, committee of all. Item number 01-040-5952, it's IT software.
Yeah.
And I have a contract that we've always had with leads online. It's in order to check for stolen items at pawn shops. Well, they're, are getting rid of their most basic level that they have. And I had already allocated under that line item. And I had already allocated under that line item, two thousand four hundred and eleven. Not, it's under that line item, but then I have a subcat with that item in that for leads online. For that line item. And now it's going up to two thousand six hundred and sixty-six, which is an increase of two hundred fifty-five dollars. So I'm going to make up that money because under that line item, I also have additional anticipated expenses. So let's say, and, um, I need another example of training seminars. So in the past, we've always had under training seminars, zero, one, dash, zero, four, zero, dash, five, five, three, zero. That's probably one of my biggest accounts under that line item.
Gee, can you tell us what line it is? Cause on the budget I'm looking, it's got line, line numbers.
Yeah, it's zero, one, dash, zero, four, zero.
But next to, next to the budget, it's actually gonna.
Oh, I don't see that one, Joe.
Nineteen, start there.
Um. Training and seminars, that aren't her. Okay.
Okay.
So I have a total of sixty-four thousand five hundred. In the past, we've always just, uh, for training and seminars, that's my line. That's the only thing you've ever seen on an Excel spreadsheet.
Okay.
Yeah. However, in my own, in the past, I've always had my own spreadsheet where I've said, okay, in order to get to that number sixty-four thousand five hundred, under that line item, I have new sergeant school, NITAB, uh, police law institute, uh, police academy, uh, accident reconstruction training. And then I also have another line or another subcategory of seventeen thousand dollars that says additional anticipated expenses. Um, just a few weeks ago, I had to sign an officer, stuff comes up, like I had some officer through, uh, Glock armor school in order to firearms armor. We have to have, so throughout the year, all these classes come up or new laws come up that we have to meet the criteria for that training. Uh, and we also don't know what training's going to be out there that year. So I did myself an additional, I know I'm going to spend at least that much success out of that lineup except for seventeen thousand. And I just leave a seventeen thousand dollar buffer basically because I know eventually I'm gonna have to send somebody through Glock armor school. I might lose some money. I need to send somebody through drone school. I might be a, uh, defensive tactics instructor, instructor or something like that. So I need to send them through instructor school. It costs a couple of thousand dollars in order to get them through that school. So in many of these line items, we have additional anticipated expenses. Like I think what Joe was trying to explain is like, usually you've never seen those. You're actually seeing my cheat notes basically under that category.
It's, we're trying to, we're trying to get more information to the board.
All that you have in the past. Is a line item. It says training seminars, zero, one, dash, zero, four, zero, dash, five, five, three, zero, sixty-four thousand five hundred. That's all you've ever seen on a spreadsheet.
And this is what you're really approving. I've got in the screen right now, I think here, if you can see it, but this is what you're, you're approving, right? Is this, this line item right here that Sam's talking about, train seminars. And in the past, you would receive a thing that says sixty-four thousand dollars training seminars. And this is roughly the same as what we spent in the past. Sam bases it on, and all these different categories, but this one Sam bases it on, you know, officers, number of officers, everything else. What we're trying to do this year and sort of show you as we build these through to help us build up to get to that number or to figure out if that number is too high, too low, whatever else it is. But we roughly know what we spent in the past on that. And that's sort of how we start our base budget. We've been putting in there all the things we can think of that would fall into that, that go into that item number right into here. So we've got in this case, new sergeant school, accident reconstruction, everything he just went over. But that's not, and we also then have that additional number because we know that generally we spend sixty-five, about sixty-four thousand dollars on, uh, training each year. He, we, we may not know if it's going to be the exact, you know, police law institute, or if it's going to be a specific, you know, the new, new sergeant school or wherever class it might actually be. But we know roughly every year, that's what the budget is, you know, it's close, it's a rough number and we try to get close to it. We know that we're going to try, we spend, we're, we're asking for sixty-four thousand dollars in training budget. This, these other numbers here, it's just sort of helps us figure out how we get to that main number. And that, and this, and hopefully every year, this will get a little more accurate, a little more detailed and we'll know. But this is just a, a way for the staff to sort of help figure out what we spend on, on different items. Instead of keep, we could just keep it blank and some items, we do just have it blank. We know that, yep, here's the number we spend every year. It's about the same every single year on this, you know, this item. So we'll just put only that number in the, the actual account number. But what you're approving is just this account number here. This shows us how we get to it and helps us, you know, partially figure out how we get to it sort of internally. But we don't have every single thing that we spend listed out all separately in our budget that wouldn't be practical, this may, wouldn't make sense. So this is just something for us to figure out and help us get to that number. So if you see things that say, like we have here additional anticipated expenses, that's just a placeholder number that sort of gets up to the the main number we're actually asking for. So that's, that's the number we're looking at are those account numbers. In this case, training seminars on your police, sixty-four thousand dollars. If there are specific ones you want us to look at, you know, that's, we know.
I, I just want to know, this helpful, you're using cleared up, right? So you're using cleared up here, which we're looking at spreadsheets. So one, again, it goes back to the trainer to be able to see this. I think it would be very helpful to, to know this, number one. Cause that explains it. I'm, I'm not, I just want to understand the math. I want to understand the processes and um, the other, the other thing is, so let's say it's sixty-four thousand dollars for your training. And let's say you need the extra seventeen, we budget for the sixteen, I think you may need an extra seventeen. The seventeen is in where miscellaneous or?
Yeah, other anticipated.
Other anticipated expenses.
I'm just saying, I don't have that allocated as of today.
Which is an example of what Stacy, you were asking about.
Unassigned.
So it's just.
This one looks different, but yeah, that might be.
It's just being educated, having the public educated, understanding these processes. We're switching from a spreadsheet to clear gov. I think clear gov will help us because we can drill down and see where that comes from as opposed to looking at a spreadsheet. But I think that's where confusion is and it's more so just understanding it. Again, I think it comes back to need training on these, on these, uh, on this, on this new system.
Just to add really quick to on like contingencies, because that's a completely separate line item. I think I have like fifty thousand contingency. Um, so like that would be, yeah. So it's like, I was talking about my budget now. Speaking for everybody, but like we get onto a crime scene and, you know, we might have to, right? Having all search warrants for it takes. You know, we could be out on a crime scene for twelve hours and be out there for a day and a half. Um, you know, we get assistance from the sheriff department, other agencies come in and stuff. Well, after some of the hours, you know, I need to buy like, you know, twenty-five different meals for everybody because everybody's been on the scene and nobody can leave and I've been stuck there for the last, you know, ten hours. Well, I would take that out of contingency by that, uh, in order to feed them or.
Just push fun.
Waters or, yeah, kind of. It's just like something major happens. I don't have any, I don't have a category allocated for.
Yep.
Uh, you know, stuff went wrong. So that's just kind of my, yeah, I mean, just like, okay, I need money from someone. That's the only place I could grab money in an emergency and say.
Yep. And so, I mean, so contingency has a statutory definition too. So contingency is an expenditure for purposes not covered in any other item which purposes cannot reasonably have been foreseen and provided for at the time of the acting of the appropriation ordinance. Um.
Okay, again, so, so I had the wrong wording. It's called additional expenses.
Anticipated.
Anticipated.
Correct, yeah. Those are not separate line items.
What are, what are all those accounts?
Yeah, those are not accounts. Those.
It's like, it's so in the past, like.
Do you have contingency and you have that some?
Those are not additional accounts. So contingency is an actual account, account number, right? So you, you're budgeting, you're appropriating these accounts, right? You're appropriating X number of dollars for training expenses. So you're still only appropriating X number of dollars for training expenses. And this example we were just talking about was Sam. Um, you're appropriating that sixty-four thousand five hundred dollars for police department training expenses. In the past, all you would have received is that number sixty-four thousand five hundred on this, on a spreadsheet or clear gov or whatever else we're using. Um, those numbers were made up from different things, you know, department heads, like Sam mentioned, hey, I had his own sort of a list of things that he knew he had to spend on. Um, you know, Troy's got his list of things that he knows he generally has to spend on to hit that, you know, in that, in that account. In this case, training and seminars. So you're still only appropriating sixty-five thousand dollars for training and seminars. The, 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 uh, additional anticipated expenses portion of it is just the part that helps us build up to that number. Because we know certain things we want to make sure we have listed out here that we know, okay, let's make sure we don't forget new sergeant school. Let's make sure we don't forget accident reconstruction training. Um, those items, there's not, they're not an account number on their own. So when that comes in, when that bill for accident reconstruction training comes in, it's not going towards that eleven thousand dollars. Uh, sort of itemization here. It's going towards the sixty-four thousand dollar account, right? It's going towards this number. It's deducted from that number here. So you're only approving that number, that's sixty-four thousand five hundred dollars. There are other things beside, you know, there's other things that go into this sixty-four thousand five hundred dollars for training, but they're all training and seminars. So that's what you're, you know, you're approving and you're budgeting that account number. The, in this case, training and seminars number, the, the total number is what you're actually approving and looking at. We happen to use the system to sort of show, and we were trying to be more transparent. We're trying to show that, you know, how we come to those numbers. Um, so that's what some of these other numbers are. But ultimately, every single thing that we spend doesn't go into the budget itemization here. We don't put every single thing in advance because we can't know that, right? We don't know what those will be. We know some of them, in this case, these are the, sort of the main ones that we know. We also know there's maybe seventeen thousand dollars historically of all their training expenses. And that's what that is, is a placeholder number in that account that you're approving. So you're approving the sixty-four thousand five hundred. Can't be used for everything or anything. Um, the sixty-four thousand five hundred dollars can be used for training and seminars. That's the only number that you're actually looking at. And contingency is a whole different thing. Contingency is just a percentage of the department.
And hopefully. No, I, I just have one question.
Yep.
It's a, it's a new line item from our chair. Perhaps or whatever, that it is a contingency, but it's not linked to anything. It's, it's folded out. It's its own line item.
So you have a, yeah, contingency is their own account.
That one is zero, one, dash, zero, one, zero, dash, nine thousand. Can you tell me what that contingency?
All right, there, uh, dash nine thousand, which one's up? Let's see. So here's our contingency, uh, contingencies in the budget here. Which one of these was it? It was.
It was eighty thousand. It's, uh, dash nine thousand's the last four, line.
Oh, there it is. So that is the.
One twenty-five.
That is the contingency for all of the uh, essentially it's the, so forty is the police department, fifty is public works, and this is the all, all their expenses. It's just a percentage of the all other expenditures, uh, number. So that's just a contingency for everything else. Um, that's what that number is there. It's just a placeholder number based on the total operating budget. You want to drop them down? We can drop them down. I mean, it's just how we sort of plan out in general.
I just wasn't linked to anything. So I was just trying to understand where that one was linked to. If it's linked to the whole budget.
That one is the one, so zero, one, zero is, it's the, the village hall we call it. You know, I'm saying this in quotes, and you can see me probably not, but um, zero, one, zero is the village hall side, but that includes every other expense, um, that's not public works or, um, police department. So that's why that's a higher number because it's based on all the rest of the, of the expenses. But it's like I said, that's just a, I mean, it has to be, to use contingency, it really has to be absolutely unanticipated during the year. Preferably we'll never.
I totally get that. I, it was just in the middle of the budget. So I was just wondering what it was attached to.
That's what that number is.
The base of village hall or anything, so.
That's what that means. You can make those zero, I suppose, but it's not, you know, necessarily recommended, but I mean, when we've used them in the past, bits and pieces of it in the past, but that's what those, those numbers are. Um, in the past, if we've used it in the past, we've used some for, I think, purchase of property. I think last year, right? We had some, you know, unanticipated. You know, the thing came up and we wanted to make sure we could get that property. So I think we pulled that out of contingency. It wasn't something necessarily we were planning for, something that we were, you know, in a budget to do, but that's what that was. I think we used part of it for that last year, but but generally, you know, it's, it's really is completely unexpected expenses.
Well, some of those dollars were also from last year for buying the materials to do the twelve by twelves.
Mm-hmm.
Just run to do our little market things that were used at Christmas.
Yeah.
And to.
Those were not planned.
Projects, things associated with the, the bridge, street, public space. Um, those were things that were never budgeted last year.
Mm-hmm.
Or it came out of contingency.
But again, there are things that you're going to have to approve as a board before we can spend anything there. Amber, these are appropriations we do. We don't do a budget really. So this is just a overall sort of capped number that we have.
Question before you is the dollar amount of operating expenses to approve as well as the capital projects you decided upon a couple of weeks ago.
Did you come up with a total, Stacy? So you said. I closed. Didn't have time to get it, but it was two hundred, it was like a quarter of a million dollars.
Or which ones?
We had contingencies before, we usually were like, oh, we know we need to do razors or, oh, we're gonna have a lawsuit.
Yeah, and that was not inappropriate use contingencies. Yeah, those were not appropriate. Yeah.
These are a lot of funds that are unassigned.
Absolutely, yep. And these are ones we absolutely cannot use.
We didn't have the contingency. If, say we didn't approve this, how would we have bought that? Wouldn't we have just had to do a supplemental?
Correct. Yeah, because I need supplemental appropriation. Okay, we're trying to get into better practices than we have in the past, um, but if we want to remove contingencies completely, I, you absolutely can remove contingencies completely.
It's just a lot of money that normally we haven't not allocated. It just.
Yep.
Quarter of a million just sitting out there. It seems like a lot to me personally. I have done this many years and we've never had that much just out there.
But, yeah, it's a hundred and eighty, I think this year is the, well, you can, I don't know if you can see my screen, but yeah, the total of contingency this year is a hundred and eighty thousand.
Uh, it's contingency and then you add in all the.
Those are not though, those we, those are not.
Unassigned monies.
Those are not unassigned though, Stacy. Those are not things that are unassigned. Those are things we've always, like I said, it's, it's the, it's the accounts that you're appropriating. So you've always appropriated that number. You just haven't known what makes up that number in the past. Right?
So now that, I know, I know, it makes me uncomfortable that there's that much money just sitting there that's unassigned.
Well, it is assigned though. It's assigned to, it's assigned to.
For you for showing us, but now you've made me worry about it.
Yep, but it's assigned to that account that it's in. It's not assigned to anything. It's just, it's, it makes up that total training amount. So if you think the police department's doing too much training, say, don't spend sixty-four thousand this year, Sam, we're only going to allocate, we're only going to give you forty thousand this year. Okay, we'll make it work. We'll make forty thousand work, right? Or any of the numbers, any of them.
Those, that, that line item shows up in multiple areas throughout the budget.
Because it's purely, because we, it's purely a placeholder as we use it to build the budget numbers. It's purely a.
So it's the placeholder and not a sign that, again, it's.
Because what we spent in the past years adds up to those numbers, right? Adds up to that, that total number. So instead of taking that and looking at that, we've actually decided, okay, what are certain things we want to make sure we do pull out and say, yep, we meant, we want to not to forget that. Essentially, so we don't forget something, uh, in an account for any given year. And we can stop, we don't have to do that. Um, we were, you know, trying to be more transparent about it, but we don't have to. We can absolutely, like, but there's, there's always going to be things that we don't know. I mean, the, the itemizations that we're talking about here, these are down to the, the small bills coming in, right? These are the bills. So you know, Ring Central phone service, that's one of the itemizations in everybody's, uh, you know, budget, right? That's, that's like, I think, six hundred and fifty dollars on one of them here, but um, it's all these small, small things, but that's necessarily all you're going to spend in that particular account, right? Telephone and data or road repair, bulk materials, or I don't know, um, subdivision signs and installation and maintenance. These are all those bills that add up to that big number. So your check on that is, is every month. These are all those bills that add up to that big number. So your check on that is, is every month, and I'm sure everybody's doing this, right? Every month when the bills come in, you're looking at those bills. You're asking the questions. You're saying, okay, why are we spending? And we do, we have those conversations, right? Why are we spending X hundred dollars on this fence replacement? Um, that's what we're talking about. It's those, those individual bills is what those are. And we absolutely cannot figure out, there's no way we're gonna be able to figure out what each of those individual bill type things are across the board. Um, ahead of time. Right? We know that roughly we're gonna spend and we'll make sure that we do only spend, and it's the limit on, you know, in departments, but say like subdivision sign, installation and maintenance, right? We have under that one, we, we have itemizations for different, you know, subdivisions. We can put those, we can break them down, we can split them out. But we know that ultimately it's the ten, you know, fifteen thousand dollars that we're spending on that. Um, I'm just pointing, trying to pull random ones here. Um, cleaning services, right? We know that every year we spend X hundred dollars on cleaning services roughly. Well, we also, and to help us get to that number and help us sort of track that and make sure we, we know we're roughly how we're figuring these budgets out, we'll put in, you know, Porter Park Cabin, Village Hall, Public Works. That's just the way for us to sort of help build up that budget and so we know what account those bills go into. As they're coming in, right, from the, uh, you know, coming into essentially the Ministry of Assistance every year, coming in or every month, they're being processed into our current system.
I, I get all that. You just keep, you're going in circles. So buildings and grounds, the bulk of that budget is forty thousand dollars. We have no clue of where that, we're gonna use that for. That's, that's the bulk of that budget. How do we not know what we're gonna spend that on?
That's because we can, well, we can print out a list of bill, if you want, we can go through and print out a list of all the bills we spent the previous year on that. But they're not gonna be, you know, there're gonna be lots and lots of different things, right? There're gonna be things from, you know, I don't know, repairs to the walls, paint supplies. There's gonna be a whole, whole huge list of different types of things for spending on. But we know generally this year we're playing on, you know, X number dollars in whatever maintenance we have on there, those maintenance projects. So it's, it's that main, it's, that's what those are. It's the, all the different bills that we print out that you see, they go into an account. All those individually things that are out there, that is what makes up the, the budget number, the account number. So you can, you've seen it, right? You've been given the bills every month. You know what they are. You see that coming through every month. You mark, provides a report to you every month. So that, that is your check on that. You absolutely know where that goes and you do have control over it. Because that's one of your main responsibilities as a trustee and you all take it seriously. We know that, because we see that, we get those questions and Anne gets some, I get them and uh, department heads get them every month. But why is, what is this bill that we're spending on? It's all those individual bills. That's what we're looking at there. That's what those itemizations are. It's not necessarily something we're gonna be able to, we're, we're never gonna be able to give you a list of everything ahead of time, what those numbers are. Um, you know, each year will be better and better. We'll be able to know a little, you know, more. Um, also it's to help us know what category to go into because in the past, every, most departments have been putting them into different categories, right? It's not been consistent. So that also helps us sort of figure out, okay, what, what category is this particular bill will go into, but.
I, I think it comes down to education, just knowing that's helpful to know that. Um, I did have another question. I'm looking at the budget. It looks like we have for engineering services budget between twenty-five thousand. Is that true? We still have twenty-five thousand in that budget?
Yes, yep.
And, um, we just had to, we just approved the bill for Fairgram.
Yep.
It'd be a hundred.
Because Fairgram does not, that's what you get on the engineering services bill is not what your, and yeah, obviously this comes, you see it every month coming into, but that's not what our engineering bills are, right? That's not the engineering bill. That's only for the essentially permit reviews and not even the development reviews. Sure, yep.
Um, what you approved was the monthly retention for Brandon to do the sport that he does here. Anything that is a special project, like the residential road project we're going to do, that's a separate design, that's a separate cost, those are separate engineering fees. So hence the dollar amount here reflects the anticipated costs of special projects.
Which we don't want to.
Also reviews.
Fairgram was for last year, it was like two hundred fifty, so.
Isn't that where you get these numbers from? Last year, these are estimates, last year's expenses. And that's why it's in there because.
Yes, it wasn't.
Remember forty thousand dollars.
Right.
Arbitrary, it's an estimate of what was.
As.
Last year, it's, it's just the same.
But a year prior, we used to see what it was last year versus what they're doing this year. Every single budget we ever had showed.
With a spreadsheet.
With a spreadsheet, yeah. This doesn't.
And those.
Isn't that?
It's a bit more confusing.
Isn't this the estimate from last year's spreadsheet that come up with the forty thousand dollars? Isn't that where you get it from?
I'm sure that's where they get it from, but the problem is we're not seeing that. I get you're frustrated that you don't.
No, I'm, I'm not getting, I'm not getting frustrated. My point was, I don't think that Joe's being clear about what the issue is. It's like, all of these non-itemized things, somebody has a spreadsheet like in the case of the chief here, that seventeen thousand dollars. I'm assuming that last year there was something close to that, so that's how he came up with seventeen thousand as the non-itemized pieces, which, because there's gonna be estimates based on their expenses. But, but Joe's trying to get across is all of that stuff is in each department has been calculated from their own spreadsheets, which it's easy to see in the spreadsheets if that's all we see is the spreadsheet from a year ago. But you don't see this year.
And you, and I guess also to, to go on that too, to answer your question too, uh, Justin, is that we, the numbers you have seen in the past were not necessarily reflective of what those categories were, right? They are not all the same. They were not all the same types of things. We're not in each of those general accounts. So this year is a rebuilding year for the, for that account to try to standardize the system so that when we give you those numbers, you will know what goes in there. You will know what goes in from the past years. This year it's been, we've been pulling things from all different, because we look at it, you know, looking, looking at different parts of the budget, um, and pulling the actual accounts that they were, you know, entered into. Um, they're not, is, there's not an easy way to say, yep, this year, last year you spent X number dollars on, you know, just to run a report and say you spent X number dollars this year, last year on this type of, I don't know, office supply or whatever, versus some other operating expense or some other item on there. Um, it, it's not, it hasn't been consistently entered into the systems. So that is what we're trying to fix and that's why this year is gonna be difficult to find. We've been trying to do as much as we can to show you the year, you know, the previous year versus this year. But it's, it is difficult this year. It absolutely is difficult because it wasn't consistently entered into the same accounts in the past. And, you know, running reports, we've, we've looked at it, I mean, we're running reports as we're trying to figure this whole thing out. And, you know, Stacy mentioned, yeah, it's taking a long time to do this. Because we've had things were entered into multiple account numbers over the past three or four years. So if you run a report that said, show me all the engineering costs or show me all the training costs or whatever it is, it may be in four or five different account names, right? So you can't really do a true comparison. That's what we're trying to fix and get away from. We're trying to make it where it's all standardized across the departments as much as possible. Um, and that we are all entering things the same so that you do know that. So you can tell that what it is, right? We're trying to fix that system. And I'm sure you've all experienced it, right? You've all been trustees, you've all seen it. And maybe they don't know how detailed you've seen it or how detailed you've looked at them, but absolutely, we're trying to fix that and try to make this more transparent and more available. So you can click on something, you can, you know what goes into that type of account or what goes in that specific account. Um, so yeah, the answer is, you know, lots of answers, but it's, we are doing our best to try to fix the system, but we're working with the data we've got, right? We're working with the information we have, we're working with the, the previous budgets and the previous entries that we have in the past, and we're trying to mesh it all up and make it work differently.
But I get that. I, I appreciate all the work you have put into it. It's just the frustration level is coming from the board now of we're so far behind in this process and we have to give you an answer between this meeting and our next meeting of what we're doing. And the president here, why are we not approving something? Because we don't understand it. It comes down to, like Simon was saying, the education of it. It's.
I'm saying, ask the questions, right? This is good. We had very few, we sort of piecemealing questions, but yeah, ask them, absolutely. We're more than happy.
I think that we all want to do the right thing here. We just want to have transparency to understand what's going on, you know? So to me, you know, I, I did play around with ClearGov, but I think that that's gonna give us an opportunity to see the previous budget. It gives you that option on there to see what was.
But those previous numbers are not gonna be accurate. That's, I guess that's what I'm trying to say is, is that they don't, there's not a consistent way to show what was grouped together. So they'll be as close as we can make it, but this year is the, is sort of a, a fresh start year on how we're tracking things. We can pull, if you have any questions about specific, you know, you know, invoices or bills, we can pull those bills, we can pull them all up and we have, right? That, I've got pages and pages and boxes of invoices, but it's not gonna show up in the system this year.
Let's review some of the elements here. Um, what you have before you are the operating expenses that are based on last year's expenses and a best guess of what they're going to be in twenty twenty-five. And in those areas where we anticipate that there will be additional things that we have to do, but it's unknown what those dollar amounts will come in at, those find themselves in the various departments under anticipated expenses, but they are not specifically delineated. So is everyone okay with having within the budget those anticipated having dollars as a place setting for anticipated increases? We know, you know, the increase is going to happen, but we just don't know, we can't predict in twenty twenty-five exactly where they will be. And those are amounts across all of the departments. So that was a question first raised. Is everyone all right with having that concept? That you understand that there will be increases, there are, there are things we will have to do, price increases will be pushed onto us, we have no choice. And so that's how we cover them in that particular category. The second question was the angst over the amount in contingency. If someone wants to make a recommendation to across the board, reduce contingencies by X percent, we can do that and we can put it in the surplus. And if something comes up later in the year, okay, then it's a supplemental appropriation.
It would also be nice to know though, if we're gonna speak, we, we purchased or did these other things. Did we know they came from, we didn't, I didn't know they came from a contingency source or some, whatever.
Yeah.
Semantics.
We always ask that, yeah. You should always be asking that and we, we usually do tell that when we're discussing it.
Also, when it's in the bills, there's an account number next as to what it's charged. It's always, it's always in the bills. Yes, it is. And it has always been.
Yep.
The account which it was charged.
And there's any questions about what account somebody's going into and why it's going into an account when you see those bills? Absolutely ask us, right? We're, if that's what, as I've been doing this this last year, like I've been noticing and going through like, okay, why is this being put into, I think, a good example is the, um, nine-one-one cost, right? The nine-one-sender cost. That was in contingency. So you're budgeting a hundred and three thousand dollars in contingency, saying this was for some unanticipated expenses. I think it was like four hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, whatever it was, I don't know, it was last year. Um, and you were saying this was gonna be unexpected, unknown cost. But we absolutely knew the cost, right? And we had that contingency number, so we were just pulling things out of that. So if you look at, you know, past contingencies, what did we spend in the past on contingencies? Well, you would see, we spent, you know, three hundred thousand dollars last year on contingencies, but not really, right? They were, actually should have been under a separate, you know, something else you could track and you could know. So.
May I also add historically, we've had different treasurers who had different philosophies about how many accounts we should have. Some treasurers didn't like having a multitude of accounts per item, so they had a tendency to categorize and group. And then you move to other individuals who want more, and now we are with the new system where we can drill down.
Yep. Without creating new account numbers, it allows us to help plan.
So that's where you have got large contingencies in the past because they were not separate, um, account numbers that previous treasurer wanted to track. It was just their philosophy, their way of doing it.
I'm okay with the contingency part. I, I'm working in construction, we deal with that all the time. I understand the contingency part. It's the other part that's new that that I have a better understanding of it now and I understand that it breaks down further from what you're saying. But so the contingency part's not an issue for me.
So the dollar.
Yeah.
The dollar amount, if you look at the summary page that's in your documents, you'll see fund balance, operating budget, um, capital expenditures, so on and so forth in the budget summary, that the total non-capital of general fund expenses that you're being asked to approve, eight million, six hundred and sixty-two thousand sixteen dollars. And then the capital expenditures that you had agreed on, there's a separate page identifying what those are, went through that a couple of weeks ago. Projects you were going to fund and wanted to do, the priorities you establish. You have that also. So back to my first question. Is everyone all right then with the explanation and keeping within the label anticipated expenses, but it's not quite defined, whatever that expression was? And, and, and assign.
That's what.
Well, anticipated, other anticipated expenses, but not itemized. That's the label that's used within the document. So we know they're going to happen, but we can't itemize them because our crystal ball is not clear right now. So is everyone all right with that? Okay, then moving on to contingency, I heard Justin say it's okay with it. Stacy? What do you want to do with the contingencies?
I'm okay with the concept, but it, it just seems like a, a lot of money for not knowing. Usually we had some sort of idea where it was going. Like tonight's property, where did that come out of? Since we should have asked, I guess, already?
It hasn't come out of anything yet because of our budget, but it will come out of land acquisition. In the capital budget, Thursday, actually, a land.
That'd be out of this budget.
Correct. But there's a land acquisition, uh, line item.
Which is, which number or which page? How much is in there now?
Three hundred.
It's part of the capital, um, spreadsheet. I think I have three hundred.
You have the closing clause.
Text change, yeah.
You have the closing.
Yeah.
So you're still on fifty?
Yeah, yep.
Right, any others? Is there any specific direction here? Any suggestions?
Is there any way possible we could move money around, put it designated for land acquisition, another fifty thousand dollars?
Yes. If you want to make, uh, yeah, like I said, I, we, we create this budget based on what you're looking for. So if you would like more inland acquisition, we can absolutely move things around. It may be dropping some portions of it and lowering some operating stuff and just making sure that we're extra careful on, you know, certain items, operating supplies and maybe pulling some out of the contingency into it. We can absolutely make it work. So if you're looking for an additional X number dollars in there for that, we can adjust things, then move it around and we will make that work, right? We can absolutely.
Land acquisition right now is at closing cost, well, no, fifty-five is property, it'll be fifty, fifty, so we'll have fifty thousand dollars in there.
Yeah, if you're looking for another property, you probably want to put it higher. If not, you know.
But I, I would, I would like to move forward that we at least move another hundred thousand dollars in there.
Out of the contingencies?
We will, we'll make it work. We'll be able to find funds in there. And then again, part of that is gonna be us, we're, it's our, our limit too on us, right? So it's, we'll make it work. You know, and then we know we have to watch our budget in certain areas. And if we, you know, and we will, right? We, we don't generally just go crazy on our budget. We don't pad the budgets, but also we, you know, we've got a little bit of flex in there, um, every year, because this is just a guiding document. So we absolutely can move things around there.
So for ease, uh, shall we suggest moving things from contingency, a certain percentage? Like twenty-five percent out of each department's contingency and park that in land acquisition?
That's fine, sure.
Yes, you're asking for a hundred or more? That's up for discussion at this board, right? I'm okay with a hundred. I'd go one fifty. More? Cause there's fifty in there, so you want two hundred total left this one?
Someone speak. We need some guidance. Someone speak. We need some guidance here.
I'm okay with it.
With?
One fifty.
Mike said.
Well, if it's twenty-five, I mean, we have to work out what the percentages are, right? So I mean.
Or just give me a, if you just give me a number, an overall number, I will make it work. All right, so just give me a number in that.
Number that is not um, overtaxing to the, to that.
Yeah. Yeah.
What I'm saying, right?
The two hundred thousand.
So.
That's what was suggested.
I'd like to have two hundred thousand left in the land acquisition. It's a little higher.
So that'd be another hundred.
Work that out of the contingency.
I will work it out in the contingencies, and we can adjust other parts. We can make it, you know, we can make that work. That's fine.
Thank you.
All right. So therefore, what do we do with the final product here?
I mean, are there other things that you're looking at to change? You want moved? Do you want adjusted? Um, if not, I mean, I would ask, I mean, for, I guess it's my question, every, you know, we ask this every time, but if there are other changes you want, or other things you have questions about, you know, ask.
I, I, I did send you an email asking about the, the, the land acquisition, and I didn't get back, so. And that's.
Yeah, I mean, that has to be something, I can't, yeah, that has to be something on the board discussion. I mean, that's, and this is where we got to this, that point.
I think, I think it's helpful if we.
Yep.
Have that.
Yep. Yep. So we will make that, um, we can make that, you know, adjustment in there, and then, you know, if, if we think this is roughly where we wanna be at, you know, I'd ask that we essentially approve this as a tentative budget. Um, and then what we'll do is, we'll, we'll finalize this, we have to make it available for posting, for publishing, and then we'll have a public hearing on it at the next board meeting. And assuming that, that everybody's satisfied with it, the board is satisfied with it, there's no changes or public input that makes any big changes, then we can, you know, we can approve the appropriation ordinance at the next board meeting. Um, you know, and hopefully that will be set with that. Um, I just think we should be good, but, you know, we can make changes at the next board meeting. If there are changes you wanna make that are, you know, all of a sudden something comes up, it's, okay, we wanna adjust this, we can make those changes. But we just need to have a, a sort of a set base number here, a base appropriation um, for the purposes of publishing and having that hearing.
So may I have a motion then to?
I wanted to confirm, we're still in Holland Salt should and the Christmas tree.
Yes, I know.
Yeah, those were all, already. Those were out.
Those are, those are. Somebody suspended those because they were near a disaster.
And let me pull.
But there was a second.
As the rules, I, I, as far as I've. I've been able to follow this. We have, there's currently no action.
Right.
We need to make it.
The rule.
Right.
Okay, second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Malco?
Yes.
Malco?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Sluck?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
All right. Then, is there a motion to approve the tentative twenty twenty-five budget and appropriation? With the understanding that in two weeks, you will see that the dollar amount for land purchase has moved up to two hundred thousand. That's a change, and those dollars will come from various other sources, probably to.
So moved.
Second.
Right?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Babcat?
Yes.
Malco?
Yes.
Sluck?
Yes.
Okay, so in two weeks then, public hearing, and in the interim, this gets published with those changes. There we go. Thank you. My questions and reports, as I said earlier, um, Brandon is going to give a brief summary of how the fox point six will allow the, the pacing of it.
I have one question. All right.
What is your question?
Where can I bring up a motion to set a date for twenty twenty-five that we could start it on this, this year? Something we hold, maybe something, September, whatever date we decide that we.
We, we, we did discuss that last time, and there will be a great effort to do it, because now we're not.
Yeah, we'll put a schedule.
What is?
Yeah, it, well, September.
Okay.
September. We have previously, the first, uh, before the last two years, this year and last year, we had always been able to conclude it sometime in September, so.
Would also, would also add a clear of training, like we have presentations at either the committee table or the um, or a build board meeting.
Those individuals who wish to attend, can't. I feel strongly about this, though I agree with you, it's valuable and it's all that kind of stuff, but I'm not going to say, hey, no, I'll come. If people want to attend, they're free to attend, they can make their appointment to learn how to do.
Because if you don't want to sit all of us once, or.
Yeah, we do, we do presentations for, you know, how the police work, how the engineers, why can't we do a presentation? And we have room right in here for presentations. It doesn't have to be a two-hour, you know, closed session, but I think that we as village trustees should be up on it. If you don't wanna pay attention, you don't have to pay attention, but I think it should be part of a presentation for, for us on the board.
But we can do that after the election.
For the use of ClearGov or for.
I'm not saying we do it now, I'm saying, like, like Mike was saying, we do it in September, we do it before the budget starts, whatever. But I mean, I think it's something that.
I would say to do it the first meeting of August, and then if you need it again, you have a second meeting of August, and then you go right after the budget. That's what I would suggest, or keep it fresh.
Uh, we can plan that. All right, let's move on to fox point.
Okay, so following the approval of final plat tonight, um, the next step will be, and I guess I should say, um, with your approval, uh, we did get all the miscellaneous small engineering uh, top review comments addressed by the applicant. Um, so all documents have now been approved. Um, so the next step will be reaching out to the consultant and the developer to get the final plat, the hard copy, what we call a Mylar copy, um, circulated for signatures from all the different various agencies. Um, and then following that, um, we need to get a letter of credit established um, to complete the public improvement. So that will be roadways, um, storm sewer, um, sidewalks, things like that, um, things that we will be officially taking over, no private improvements. From that date that the, so once we receive the letter of credit, we will sign, as the last entity, we will sign the final plat. The applicant will then take it to the Winnebago County Recorder's Office, get it recorded. From the date that it is recorded, the developer has one year from that date to complete all the public improvements unless they come back and ask for an extension of that. So um, what we are hoping to do and what we will do is, following the approval tonight, we will reach out to the applicant. We'll try to get an estimated timeframe on when they anticipate construction to start. Um, currently, they are working through a funding agreement with Winnebago County to complete some roadway improvements, not in the scope for this subdivision, but some additional improvements that the county wants in that intersection, that they were asking the developer to do on their behalf. Um, so they're working on a funding agreement right now. Once that gets finalized, we will get the letter of credit established, and then that will start that one-year process of completing the public improvements. So we do not know at this time when actual construction of homes is going to start. Um, sometimes it's concurrently, sometimes it's completely after the public improvements have been done. Um, we're not exactly sure, but we will be setting up a meeting with them, trying to get a, a rough timeline together. But the important date for you guys to know is, once that plat is recorded at the Winnebago County Recorder's Office, they have one year from that date to complete public improvements.
When, how do we find out how much the county, if they're on that intersection, how much, how can we find out what the split is?
Um.
Just out of curiosity.
I was, I mean, that, that will be a public document, because it's a, the county.
What intersection is.
Old River Road in Roswell. So, um, I, I think there's some ditch grading that they're gonna be doing. They're adding a turn lane in one of the areas. Again, it's not something that was required for this development. It's something that the county is trying to plan right now for the future, so that they don't have to come back and re-tear up pavements and things like that, so. But that, all of that is going to be included in the letter of credit that they're working through with us and the county. So we're all going to be in agreement on that dollar amount, so that then we are prepared, um, if we have to.
Based on your experience, any idea of a date?
A date for this? Whenever. Um, I mean, I, I think realistically, we have at least a month um, of working through, uh, getting the plat signed, um, getting the letter of credit established, or agreed upon price, and then sent to us, a hard copy. Um, so I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how long it takes with the banks. It can be anywhere from a couple of weeks to even longer, um, just really depends. Construction is not going to start, I would think, until I would say late April, early May, at best case scenario. So asphalt plans realistically aren't going to open until the end of April.
That's the improvements, not the actual building and properties.
No, the actual building of the homes, i- i- Yeah, that, that's going to wait. I mean, because don't, don't want to give that, so first they have to do all the stormwater improvements first, drainage is paramount. Um, and then they're, they will likely set the roadway up, because then what they do is they base, based on where the curb and gutter is, you know, they take measurements off of that, the edge of pavement to where the property line is, where the foundations are going to be. So they'll build from the center of the public right away, generally work their, work their way. So the actual private homes will come generally after the fact.
So I'm guessing I'm asking, are we looking for a, a cornfield yet this year, or is it gonna be?
Oh, no, no, you'll, you, I would anticipate you were going to see movement this year, absolutely, yep.
Usually we just wait for the tractor to show up and then we move.
Any other questions you have? During Fox six, thank you. All right, um, moving on, a public comment. Hearing a public comment, uh, no need to exit the session, may I have a motion to adjourn?
The one.
The exact number said. All in favor?
Right.
Beating adjourned. Let's take a couple minutes for eight, four.
Hey Joe, do I have you on other recording, or do I just keep this one on? You're muted.